Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special call city council meeting on this Thursday, January the 23rd, 2025 at 6:03 PM. This is Derry. Would you call the role, please?
Yes, I see Brown.
Here.
Ralph Baker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Steve Tedford.
Here.
Rod Talis absent, but there's a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have four items on the agenda tonight. So we will begin, of course, with the number one. It's a resolution to adopt the 2025 City of Greenwood budget.
Mayor, if we could.
Yes, sir.
Wait till you give us some time before you do the other ones.
Okay. Don't mind. Okay. We'll go to number two, finance resolution, amending resolution, number 124 dash 07, adopting official salary range scheduled to adjust for COLA.
It says finance, but this is something that we do when we adopt the budget. If you award the federal COLA, you might remember that our salary matrix updates by the federal COLA. And usually you award the state COLA to the employees in the budget when you do that. So it's updated along with the adoption of the budget therefore. What you have in your packet, everything is updated, increased by two and a half percent federal COLA, as mentioned, and in, you know, depending upon your adoption of the budget, which includes that new financial assistant position. Number two, we added that position. It wasn't there.
And that financial assistant too, are her duties more than the, the financial assistant one?
Yes. We have an end job.
So you, it is considered more than what Shannon has been doing.
She's been, I've been. Things that she didn't initially have as a lawyer.
Well, if, if we're going to start being consistent with issuing the state COLA, should we not change that to state COLA instead of federal?
We have an option to not give one off. The state COLA, what you actually issue or what you actually approve is not germane upon that salary matrix. The matrix only adjusts to the federal COLA. So what you give below that is no difference whatsoever. This is just the salary standard.
But back when we created the salary matrix, it was like, there were no objections. Nobody ever voiced opposition to raising this thing by federal COLA because, as you know, it was discussed ad nauseam. And it was decided that the fair thing to do was to adjust this by federal COLA, even if you didn't issue a COLA to employees for 10 years. That was the agreed upon way to do this matrix.
We had to keep messing with the ma- the matrix numbers. They would just do their own thing with the federal COLA.
But we are adjusting the matrix every year. We're changing the maxes every year.
Well, yeah, they're, they're going up with the federal COLA.
And that's what we changed this budget to, is matching that.
Unfortunately, we seem to send all of our employees to the max a lot as well. So that's why we're going in the tank with money. But instead of just creeping up, that's another story for another day. Which to your point would make sense doing the state COLA raise because it wouldn't be as much.
It allows us, it allows us employees who have been here for so long and are continually maxed out, it allows them to get that cost of living, allows them a little bit of, of an increase, no money, I think I already called it, cost of living, to give them a little bit more to go longer.
But they're getting that with the state COLA.
Yes. But if this allows them, if you don't allow that, that amount to move with the COLA, then they can't receive a COLA.
Right. I, I understand that.
His argument is if we're always giving state COLAs, why are we moving it by federal?
Yeah.
And I don't remember what anybody's excuse was for that.
Well, it was just because it wa- it was, that way the max would kind of move on out away and there would be a little room for growth. You know, you don't have to give that max as it moves. The state number was this. So if the guy's max goes to 65,000 and he's at 56, we don't have to go to 65. He might bump up to 58. And then, and then next year he goes to 63. Well, the federal goes up to 70. So it's going to kind of stay ahead of the game and give you room to grow.
That's what I thought. I just didn't.
That was why we did it that way now.
Make sense.
Given the balance and, and merit.
True. I agree with that. I mean, there's, there's issues. I mean, that's.
I mean, that, I mean, that's why people are getting 0.2% merit because they're just, they're, they're taking the COLA and figuring out the difference and giving them to, to, to make it to the max.
Yes.
I think, I think Ralph, you have a, a really good point. I mean, that's one in some ways. We have a lot of retirees moving to the state of Arkansas because the cost of living is cheaper.
I see your point. I see your point. If you wanted to word it to where the COLA is always the state, then you can offer less. But if you're saying that because we use the state as the barometer, that the max then would become always the state, even if you, if like this year, it's 2.3 for the state of Arkansas, you could have given one and it still would have moved the max by the difference, the 1.3%. And you're just saying, do you use that instead of the federal number?
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. I know, I know before, two years ago, we were giving the federal. And I think we switched to the state. So.
Somebody gave a really good recommendation for that.
Somebody.
I don't know who.
Are you saying we, us in the city or the, in the fish?
The, the COLA.
We, we gave the COLA.
We, as the ga- the, the city, we used to use the federal COLA. And we switched it to the state a couple of years ago, the state COLA.
Yep. And Tom's very good.
And it's, it's been, it's been shown too, that the, that, I mean, currently Greenwood's city's cost of living is among the lowest in the, in the state. I think Pine Bluff and maybe another state was lower than, than us as far as the cost of living. So, I mean.
Groceries are still expensive.
Yeah.
Well, the problem with that was that a large percentage of your actual workforce don't live in Greenwood. So if you limited it to Greenwood's, that you, you would be saying, come to Greenwood. And you'll, it'll cost you less. But most of the people live outside of the city of Greenwood. You're talking to one of them right now.
Maybe on to something right there.
Hmm.
Making boys live in Greenwood.
Oh, man.
Tom, the, the budget as it's written right now, though.
Yes.
Is to reflect these numbers.
The budget is reflecting that number. You can make changes and I'll for, I'll just put them into whatever you approve.
And I think you're right. We, we, we play this game where we, you know, if they're not there with, then they do it with your merit, you know, and so you're absolutely right.
No, wow.
The, I would go with you. I'd say, you know, I mean, to go along and just make it, I mean, it to the state, the state COLA. If you, if you want to make a recommendation to that.
Chief, you got something? Yes, sir.
Maybe you should come to the corner and use that microphone. Don't know.
We don't have.
You know, because.
State your name and address.
Yeah, we need.
30 Bellemare.
30.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, Madam Clerk, if, if I may, if you cut anything, I would ask you not to cut from the employees. I got a couple of things that I'm just going to share with you. This is from Zillow. It's fairly accurate, but it's not 100%. Cost of living in Greenwood is for this year, for 2024, up 2.7%. This is all public document, open source information. Arkansas homeowners face soaring insurance rates. Rates in Arkansas was the second highest. Came in at 144% only behind Oklahoma for mortgage rate insurance. If you had a policy in 2021, you're now paying 69% more for your homeowner's insurance.
I feel it.
Yep. Vehicle insurance. This is from Arkansas Democrat Gazette. Rose from 2.6 in March of last year to 22% from a year ago. That's Arkansas Democrat Gazette. This is the sewer rate increase that the city of Greenwood sent out to the citizens. And I agree 100% with it. We need to raise it. Rose 22, rose 82%. This is from city of Greenwood. Raises 82% over a period of two years. We all know the cost of living has gone up. I just asked that you wouldn't take it from your employees. Let's, let's figure out something else to cut. Mr. Tom asked me to come back and take a look at my budget. I cut another 19,000. My budget, y'all, if you remember, y'all actually thanked me for, for my budget. I was proud of it. We were, we didn't even raise it at 1%. So, and if you'll remember, a portion of that was due to the insurance cost from the buildings. We was right, we was way under insured. That wasn't up to me. That was just, that's what the city had to do. So I cut another 19 at the, at the request of the mayor. So if you look at mine, I'm going to be not even 1%. I'm roughly, you know, probably 0.06%. We didn't. I'm just asking that we figure something else out before we start initially cutting from our employees. You, you made mention, and Arkansas is a lower place to live, but if you look at who's moving in and where they're moving from, they make a, where they're living now and they move into Arkansas and the cost of living is here. So if you're comparing that to people moving into Arkansas, what are they moving into? Are they retiring? Are they going into Walmart, to where they're growing up there in Northwest Arkansas? I don't know if that's comparing apples or oranges. And that's, that's my two cents. I totally respect y'all. I, you know, y'all, I, I pray for you to make the right decisions. And I understand y'all got difficult decisions to make, but I just pray that, and hope that you won't start with our employees first.
Like Chief, couldn't agree with you. Couldn't agree with you more. My, my question is, is this matrix, how many, how many employees are we going to impact if we change this to the state COLA? This is just the matrix. This is just the max.
And it's going forward. It's not, everything is already set in place, you know?
Yeah. So the budget was created with it, with approving a 2.3% COLA raise for the employees.
Right.
So if this is changed to 2.3%, it's only going to change their overall base for those people that are already at max.
You're at max, it'll affect you by 0.2%,
Right.
which is less than $5,000, probably around three. It, it means at the highest level, you're probably $280. At the lower levels that are at max right now, some of the line workers that we have, you're looking at less than $200. So, and you're looking at about maybe 12, maybe a dozen. So it's not a lot right now. But if you want to consider that going forward and establish that for next year, saying that we're going to adopt it as the max will be moving with the state number, remember you have the option of changing the COLA and saying, we're going to go less if you wanted to.
I think it's something I should do in case they're going forward.
I think it's important that we stay with the state COLA, wha- whatever rate that is. I just, if we're going to, if we're going to continue to do the state COLA, I just think that this matrix should be tied to the state COLA and not the federal COLA.
I mean, I think that's a good point. I think going forward, I think that's, yeah, we should probably look at doing that for, for, for next year's budget.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that'll be what you're concerned about, but even if you go ahead with this tonight at the 2.5, whatever is already in the budget is what our employees are going to get. They're not going to come back and say, oh, if now they can go up 0.2%, they're not going to come back and change their amount. But you've got entered is what our people will get paid.
Right, right.
I don't know if that's a concern of yours or not.
Now, what he's saying.
He's already, he's already got that base in there.
Yeah.
2.5.
But I agree, it needs to be the same.
What he, what he's.
No.
What he's indicating is that if we went ahead and right now and dropped it to the max to be, the max would roll with the state, then the people that are getting the buffer between what they are at with the COLA and the max at 0.2%, those are the ones that would be impacted and it would be minimal. So.
No.
In a $27 million budget that we have right now, that's a drop.
Well, I would say, I would make a motion then that we pass the resolution here as is, but moving forward next year, must consider that.
So noted.
I'll second it.
Have motion second.
As is, but change next year.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Tedford.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three is human resources resolution to allow volunteer firefighters individual health insurance coverage.
So now that we have switched insurance to Arkansas Municipal League, they do allow.
Oh, I think I'm loud enough, but they, oh, that's right. Sorry, watching people.
There's more.
Yes. And now that we've switched, switched Arkansas Municipal League, they do allow other types of employees to enroll in insurance coverage. It was requested from you all recently to inquire about adding the volunteer paid firemen onto our coverage. And so we did check with our broker with Municipal League and they can do that. And so Sharla has wrote up a resolution requesting that change be made to our handbook. Like we previously talked about, this would only be for employee only. And the reason for that is, is that administratively it would be extremely difficult to maintain payments for insurance because we bill a month ahead on the insurance premiums. And sometimes our wonderful firemen, their paychecks are not a substantial amount for us to be able to deduct that from. And so therefore we would be having to bill them, therefore trying to, you know, chase after them so we can make sure we get payment and so forth. And so we just think that another way to keep those firemen that are already on the department, that we could offer them employee paid insurance at no cost to them, for them only, for medical vision and dental. So that's what we're.
If they want it, if they elect it, or do they all take it and have to waive it?
Yes.
How's that go?
Okay. Yes, either way. So if, so I will give a steward if this is approved and find out which employees wish to sign up. And then I will take care of that paperwork and then it will be effective March 1. So, so pretty quickly, they're not going to have to wait the waiting period, anything like that. They have generously offered an open enrollment just for the fireman.
And this is just the fireman, not their families.
Right.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
But it could be extended to the families, you know, if we wanted to incur that administrative.
If, if we offered it, they would have to pay, just like the rest of our employees do for their family coverage. But the difference again is that I have family coverage for my children and my husband now. And that comes out of my paycheck every two weeks. Whereas the firemen do not have a full size paycheck like a regular full-time employee would. And therefore it would cause a, quite a bit of strain on our finance department to mess with that billing and to try to make sure that our payments are made. Because again, we receive that one large bill every month where we pay a, a month ahead. So I, I feel like it would not be a feasible option for them to have to pay for the family coverage. I think it's generous enough that we are offering employee only coverage.
And if we pay as we have, we could get ourselves in trouble with auditors.
Yes, we have. And we've had issues before. Yeah, we cannot, we can't be behind on that. Our employees cannot owe us money.
It's lending money.
Yes. But this hopefully can help retain our employees that we have and even hopefully be able to recruit more with this benefit. You have any questions?
Well, the, I think it's wonderful. I think it's fantastic, you know, to, to extend this. But I think, you know, a lot of the younger ones, you know, that's, that's what we hope is want to get a, a younger group of men in there or, I guess, you know, employees, I should say. And, you know, and typically with, comes with that is, is, is kids.
Right.
So.
I understand that. But most of the time when, in, in our fire department, as of currently, it is volunteer. And so most of your firemen that are coming on already have full-time jobs where they are offered insurance. And they are doing this, I would hope, as they've been, as a service to their community, as well as they're getting paid and we can offer some sort of benefit for the insurance. But again, it would be a very difficult to try to bill these firemen. And therefore, when they don't bill, they don't pay us, then we have major audit issues.
This is a start. That's an option.
It's a start, yeah.
We hate to be in that position.
Yes.
Chief, chief said if they don't pay, you cut them off. But that's.
We can't do that because then if you say, oh, I didn't pay, I didn't have the money, which I understand insurance is expensive. I'll tell you right now, it's about if you have family coverage with Arkansas Municipal League, I pay 180, about $183 a paycheck. That's a paycheck. Okay. Which is, which is a lot, you know, because with the cost of everything else, and when you have children, it is very expensive. And it so happens where our firemen wouldn't.
Two weeks.
I'm sorry.
Is that every two?
Every two weeks. Yes. But only 24 pay periods. We are 26 pay periods. What I was saying is that if it got to the point where they were not able to make that payment, we would have to turn them off and we couldn't put them back on. They would have to wait until open enrollment again the following year, which we only have open enrollment one time. So, I mean, in my opinion, this is, you know, a proper benefit. I mean, the city, I think it, how much did you say it's costing? If we put them all on employee only? 71,000.
Well, maybe that's an added incentive for them to show up to medical calls and everything else.
Right.
If they.
Right. That was kind of my concern. I, I don't mean to be ugly, but from a HR standpoint, when I'm trying to stand up for our people, you know, when you say, oh, the part-time people get to have this insurance, well, they're not coming to work every day and working all day like the rest of us are, you know? And that's kind of what I told Stuart. I said, what if you have Billy Jay who only comes to one call a month, but yet he gets to have insurance? You know, that's not right. But, I mean, it is what it is. So, yes.
But it is, but uh, but then it's a detriment to all the ones that say, hey, you know, I work and then, you know, if I'm fighting a fire up till 3 o'clock in the morning and then my job starts at 7 o'clock, you know, I don't say, hey, I'm going to get a, you know, I'm just going to call in and, you know, give it, you know, uh, you know, come in late or whatever, you know, they have to go right into that job.
And I appreciate them. And I'm not saying I don't appreciate them, but we'll probably just have to agree to disagree on that one. But whatever you all would like to do.
But Billy Jay knows that, that he's going to lose his, his family's insurance because he's not showing up for medical calls.
Hopefully he'll show up.
Then, then this list here would be less.
Mm-hmm. Right. So that's, that's what you all requested. And so that's the information that I'm providing. Okay. All right. Great.
Thank you, Daniel.
Along that same line, there's an administrative function or administrative mayor on doing something like you were saying, well, somebody shows up all the time and he gets it, but the other person doesn't. And how you manage that is how they have to manage it. One of the things that we're not thinking of, and that is that there's an estimate in the budget of what or who or whom would be signing up for this. The number I was given by Stuart was 13. So we did 13 at employee only coverage because we don't know anything about who would be wanting dependent and to what level, because there's family coverage and individual and spouse. So if you're looking at, you are all this family coverage and non-family coverage, just employee. So the city pays 36% of that cost additionally. So the employee right now, the employees in the city don't pay the full dependent coverage. They pay two thirds of it, little over, little under two thirds. So we would have to factor that in and that's significant. So if, how many do you have? 20 or? Okay. So if you get to 33 and, or if, if all 24 want it, we're woefully underfunded in the budget. That will radically change his number. Cause just what we had right now, it was, it was 68 to $71,000 to add that. Health insurance is very expensive in the city. So it is a great benefit, but we may be coming back and asking for a resolution to adjust that budget for the amount that we finally come up with a number on.
Even on individual?
Even on individual, all 24 could sign up.
Without consideration for family. And if you add that option.
It's 36% more to the city.
Yeah.
Correct. So that's just more for you to think about.
I think this is a good start. And I think maybe as we see how this works and who participates, then maybe we can investigate whether or not we want to start. I mean, that to me is a great incentive. I mean, insurance, especially if you're young, getting started. But let's, I like, we see how this goes. But I think this is a good start.
Oh, you, you're just saying with the family, with the employee only.
I would like to, when is our, our window of opportunity to.
December.
To see.
It's normally the end of November, beginning of December. It's kind of basically whenever we want to, we can't pick, but in that, within November, December, we normally just pick a time where I think most people will be working. And because the insurance company applies for all employees to come by so that they can get as much information as possible.
Takes effect at the beginning of the year.
So with the, with our current full-time employees, do we have 100% participation?
Well, yeah, they're, they're all getting it free.
The, and so as far as the family then, I mean, how many participation on that?
Maybe about 15%. My, my, just.
You've got a lot of employees who are, you know, at that lower pay range. And so it, it touches it. And when we switch to Municipal League, we sit on an A grade.
My wife's employer has health only, not dental and vision. So I cover her on dental and vision, but she, her insurance is cheaper for her to be on it than to come over on ours. So that's why we, I only have her in vision and dental. We don't, we don't have that option anymore. It's, you get two options.
Well, I guess what I was learning, if, you know, if we have a, a window of same like, you know, you know, we, you've got to make your commitment by March or whatever for the ones that are going to go on the thing there. If we could kind of get that as a say, oh, well, we're only going to have five, but you know, they sure would like to, you know, be family. And so, you know, so I think that's an expense that we can incur, you know? Fantastic.
The fire department has employee only affected through one. And they're doing through months back to get them all in here to get information. Cause we don't have, I mean, I have most of their information, obviously. But I think that if it was decided that you all want to add their family, they're going to have to wait open enrollment, just like the rest of this would have to wait. And like if I haven't, if I have, well, that's a qualifying event. This would not be a qualified event, in my opinion, that I can check with them and see what they think. But normally you would have to wait to open enrollment to make that type of change, which would be later on in the year. But that's only, obviously you all said that.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. If we go ahead and do individual enrollee possi- potential for individuals to enroll, we're going to have budget study sessions throughout the year. And then by that time, we would definitely know in open enrollment, October, November, how many people are going to be interested in family coverage.
And again, I guess I'm applying that principle there of 15%. You know, I was thinking, you know, well, hey, you know, I'll go, I'll say 20%, you know, one out of five over there, you know, say that, yeah, I want to do the, the family coverage. Because like I said, it's whether it's his wife or, or his spouse or his spouse and kids, it's going to be the same.
Also, you might be not remembering, I don't know, that the strain on the finance department to chase those, that still exists no matter what.
Sure.
We can't payroll deduct out of that.
Yeah. And it's like saying, there's a strain to, you know, get, you know, sometimes keep, people pay their water bills. You know, there's a strain for us on the AMP to, you know, collect the, you know, their taxes there.
It becomes illegal.
And stuff.
It's an auditor issue. We can't.
And, and, and I think that.
I can't stress that enough.
Okay. Or whatever. Yes, you know, and there's.
If you want an example, I can give you one.
Excuse, excuse me.
And I don't understand how you in, in these people that don't have the jobs that even you have or anybody else have, I mean, that, that can happen any day. One, we cut them off. Sure. Period. Exactly. I mean, that's a situation I don't want to be in, and I know the finance department doesn't want to be in, so I don't know why you would push to put us in that position without, without testing the water.
I'm just thinking that, that, that is our goal here is to try to attract firefighters and, and as an incentive, and if we don't have, you know, it's not much of a sin. I mean, it's a great incentive. You say, yeah, if I just want to be just employ myself, you know, but I really want, you know, I've got a wife or and kids, you know, that I really want, you know, to.
We're offering, we're offering a huge incentive that we've never had before.
That's true.
It's not the whole cake. It's not the icing, but it's the cake. So I think you, I think it'd be wise to start with cake first and let it see what happens. I mean, it's
and I'm, and I'm just saying, if we have this window, we can kind of, you know, find out for sure how many are committed and stuff, and then, you know, we can see that.
You let it.
Because it might be just, like I said, it might just be five and then and out of that five, it just might be three with families and stuff, and so the actual impact.
Charlotte just said still exists, no matter how many it is.
Right. If it's one, it's absolutely, that's right.
And so it's no different. I don't want to be the guy to call them up and say, hey, no insurance. Because the city, because the city can't pay it.
Our problem is track record, any track record that we've had on trying to collect these insurance premium have been bad. So that's why we say what we do.
Yeah, chief's got to make the call. So do you want to do that, chief?
And in terms of, you know, we discussed this at the last council meeting. If we're going to go to these guys and offer this up to them, could we get some sort of idea whether the city could offer an incentive to not take that employee policy if they can just, if their spouse has a policy existing that covers everyone, because you're talking about fifty five hundred dollars per year, per volunteer that accepts that employee only. And if you could tell them, we'll give you a hundred bucks to let your wife's insurance take care of that, then you've reduced that volunteers uh, our, our commitment by almost four thousand dollars per year.
Talking about a cash incentive instead of?
Yeah.
In lieu of this?
And I've actually done this. When I worked at Conoco, they said, if you do not opt for insurance, we'll pay you X number of dollars a month. If you're, you know, because there's no reason for you to have two policies. If one covers everything and that, that's a, that's a good chunk of change.
We don't offer it now to our full time employees.
No, well, that's what I'm saying is, all I want to do is take this step and find out if we can do that. Because that would work for anyone in the city.
Would you, would you then be, would you want to do it for all employees?
I don't know. All I want to do is find out if you can.
Well, what he's saying is though, let's say it's a full time employee and they're on family, but we said, oh, we will give you a hundred dollars a month to take your, uh, family off there, then that's a savings to the city.
Yeah, I know what he's saying, but we don't do that now. So if you did it to the part, part, part time, you're going to do it for everybody.
Sure.
We've never known.
I think you're opening up a big, big deal.
Then, then just make it an inquiry.
I guess it'd be called an entrance incentive payment.
Lack of insurance incentive?
Payment, it'd be payment to the.
I don't care what you call it, just find out if we can do it.
I think the good, the best incentive that we can come up with right now, under the conditions that we are in here, what's wrong, what's on the table is offering this insurance to your part time employee. We've never done it before, so I think you're getting off into some interesting areas that are certain that are all.
But we need to really study it on out more like.
Along with the rest of it?
With along with the rest of everything, because if you do, you're going to get yourself in an audit, audits, audits.
They don't.
One way or another, and it can be in trouble. That's right.
Mr. Maker, did you want to make yours in a motion, form of a motion while you go or?
Well, I got a question before you all. So all of these are tied, all resolutions we got are one twenty five. Is that, are you putting a dash, something else in there?
It's not numbered because it's not adopted yet. As soon as you adopt it, I number it.
Okay. Okay, that is confused.
One twenty five is really just the year represented, like twenty five is ordinances, the year of the ordinance and resolutions are one twenty five, like one, you know, one twenty five dash oh one, oh two, oh three.
Okay. I'll make, make a motion where you adopt the resolution by title only.
We don't have.
Just about adopt the resolution then.
Second.
Have a motion second to adopt.
It's around?
No.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Rainwater?
No.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Give me just a minute. Do I have a time limit?
Yes.
It has to be made before tomorrow.
Before tomorrow, that's a long time.
That's what we thought.
Not on our track, really.
I thought one AM was a long time too.
I think everyone thought that.
Yes.
It passes by majority.
All right, thank you.
Danielle, I'd ask, you're, you're going to be talking to the firefighters by March first. At the March, uh, yeah, at the March, um, city council meeting, would you give us an update of how many people decided to participate? And while you have them, also ask them if they may be interested in family. Thank you.
All right, what's the council's pleasure here? We, we can go to number four, Mr. Tedford, or go back up to the top. Follow.
I'd say go ahead and go to number four.
Go finish up. Okay, uh, come from Tedford, budget time.
Okay, so what is our official, the timeline for our budgets? When do the department heads, what's the deadline for them to have budgets to you?
Oh, that's for me.
Yes.
Okay, they get their packages usually at the beginning of September. I work on it and get it prepared in the end of August. So September is when they start. And they have until, I would like them by mid October. And that way we can establish the timelines for the city council to start their budget study sessions, their budget review sessions. And then after that, I don't have a problem with, um, the holiday periods because I'm usually here now. Um, I did in the past, but a lot of you have holiday plans and you're either gone or so that's the problem we have in December. It's trying to schedule things during the holidays. And, um, if we could at least get all the budget study sessions reviewed by then and then you're free to go, we like, that would mean by mid December, you would have to schedule them all. So you during the middle of the year could decide, okay, here's the dates, we're going to start scheduling them. So these budgets have to be ready by this date. And that way I'll make sure they get the information ahead of time for them to be able to prepare a budget, have it back to me to present to you guys by the date you set in November for your sessions.
Well, the, and we talked about this, the important thing is that we have to have a budget to look at because everything's within the context. It's just a whole budget and we've got to see things in relation to each other. And, and one of the difficulties we had the other night is just that there's so much funding that comes from the general fund to each of these, it's not ideal to have them come in at different times. And we can't remember what we told the police department to do with their budget, because now we're looking at the fire department or the street department budget and it's hard to get the big picture. So we've, I mean, we could have been here for a lot less time the other night, and that's not why I'm concerned. I'm just saying we couldn't make good decisions the other night. And, and that's incumbent on each of the department heads. And if anybody in this meeting remembers as, as plan director, I perhaps was one of those that pushed that envelope, but now that I'm on the other side, I have no problem in saying, we've got to make this work so that we're not making bad decisions in January. And if it comes, I mean, we may need to have a study session to talk about what we want to do in terms of incentives or disincentives, have those in on time or what we need to do if there's an issue. But we've got to make good decisions for the city.
Let me add to that, and I totally agree with what you're saying. I think the, the strategy should be we, we work backwards. You provide the dates you want these budgets by. And I'll make sure that they have the resources to be able to start and finish that budget before the date that you said, this is our hard stop. The, what I'm going to be presenting to you tonight in a little bit really should be a budget study session. And then this formality of coming in and approving it at a actual vote session should just be coming in, you already see, you already have known the numbers. It's not changed. It's, the only thing you would have to do is the standard typical housekeeping items similar to what you did tonight so far. Uh, and I like that strategy. It's, that's a good one. You provide the hard stop.
That works for me.
I agree. I agree. You, you almost have to have a budget study session over the budget as a whole.
As a whole, that's correct.
At the end, before, before it's approved.
And then you can go and maul it over and before you come back to actually vote on it, you'll have all the information already in your hands to look at. You won't have to recall, what did I decide a month and a half ago?
Is November one too early?
It, not for me.
I mean, these department heads ought to manage their departments and be able to, they know what's going to go on for the rest of the year. They know what's going on for the last two months. Keeps us out of this holiday weather arrangements.
Well, and that also goes to Tom's point of having a three year plan, takes some of that out. I mean, you should know what's coming down the pipe to some extent.
Who do you have, you may have discussed one of it, who do you have a three, five year plan, ten year plan out of?
I have a form, uh, kind of one being formatted or format, being prepared kind of informally with street department because we're pushing off items to the future years. So I kind of know that these items are still critical and, and having to be done, but I don't have an actual formal plan from them. I do from water sewer because of the rate study and because of all the intricacies of what that infrastructure need is. And, um, let's see, who else would be so, Parks has developed a three to five year plan. They actually presented to their Parks Commission. Problem is they, they tend to veer off that path to some days.
But at least it's a plan.
At least it's a plan, yes.
But you're missing, you're missing fire, police.
I don't have a five year plan or a three year plan or any plan from fire, other than when he comes in and presents his budget and says what he wants. And a big ticket item. I know long range, there is a six and a half million dollar at today's rate for a new fire station out on the west side. When that comes into actually gone past conceptual, it's probably going to be much higher than that because of just inflationary cost. As far as the tanker is, I mean, the pumper engine tanker, whatever you want to call it, that tower engine, whatever. He's got one that's looking like twenty six, possibly early twenty seven needing to be purchased and that's going to be, that's going to require a loan. So that, that's the only, the only way I know it is I have to be very observant to what's in the budget and what they, what's being said. But I'd like it in writing. I want to know what is your vision for the next five years? That, that is critical to me specifically for cash flow. And police, you need to do the same, although yours is usually just in the form in capital sense in the form of cars.
And we gave Mr. Tom the, uh, our, the police department budget by October. I understand fully what you're saying. Until everything's there, you can't make a decision on it and I, I see the difficulties of it and I agree wholeheartedly about doing this throughout the year. And yes, I'll, I'll get you a five year plan.
So I think that you know when your kind of slow times are, and if you could marry your little, your slow times with Tom's slow times, you could sit down and develop these plans.
Right.
And he's fully capable, capable of that.
Oh, I.
And I would.
I would agree, but this is the first time, I'm not making excuses. This is the first time I've heard about a five year plan, but if that's, if that's what y'all would like to see, that's what I'll present.
Yes.
Understood. But I was, we did have, we did have a hard date to Mr. Tom about October timeframe. He asked us to get us a rough draft. No, I'm not, I'm speaking for Brad Hobbs.
Right.
We provided that rough draft and it would have helped.
No.
No, yeah, you don't think I was targeting you, do you? I mean, I mentioned police and fire that you don't have it out of.
Well, I took it as, I hate what happened. Where was the?
No, I'm sorry.
You didn't know, so you, now you know.
Yeah, I took it as in.
Ask, I guess we're formally asking y'all to sit Tom throughout the year and develop a plan. And it is a plan. It's not, it's things that, things change. You know, but that plan can be altered over time. I think when y'all get with Tom though, Tom can actually give projections. Because he can give you population projections and then you can marry his projections with your needs.
And, and to me, what the, your plan is really, like I said, for Tom and his projections, he's, we know the, the kind of, you know, you're going to have these, these same expenses every year. He's trying to look at planning like, oh, I, I need this big expense, like I'm wanting to plan a, a building, you know, here or whatever. I, I need this, you know, bulldozer over here that's going to, you know, be, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand or something, you know, I think that's really what he's trying to look and trying to prepare for those really large ticket items. And again, it's not set in concrete. You're not bound by it. It just kind of gives you him an idea that, that, you know, these are going. And it seems that if you see a convergence of four or five departments, all of a sudden have, you know, out there five years from now, you know, big ticket items, you know, he said, whoa, you know, to look at, at, at some bonds or something, you know, to try to, to prepare for this.
Well, and Rod said the key word needs. We, we've got to start really looking at things and deciding what are needs and what are wants. And that's particularly with capital expenses. I mean, that, that's something that I will look at this, this next year, within the next few months is taking a look at, at, at inventory. What we got for vehicles, trailers, trucks, backos, skid steers. I mean, we need to really take a hard look at what, what do we need to do our jobs? Not as what every department wants. We may have to start sharing equipment.
Amen.
But I, and I'm not, I'm not being critical. We have kind of a rare opportunity here because everybody's, everybody in the choir is on the same page right now. And we've got the finance director who can do all this. I mean, we have an opportunity. Business plan for the city budget is, is just a reflection of what y'all want to do. And it's my first time to hear about a three year plan as well. Anyway. Oh, yeah, we just, we just, this has got to be easy and predictable. That's, I'm the.
I like to say the want to haves and gotta haves.
Right.
These are what I want to have, and this is what I gotta have.
When backhoes were $40,000 apiece, that's one thing. That now backhoe isn't $40,000 anymore.
Yeah, then the five-year plan is more designed for water sewer. Cause there's a lot, long time in getting those projects moved along and completion. And another thing too, if you give me your plans, then what we'll do is we'll tend to do now is that you give me an item and you say it's going to be a $2.5 million. And, and here it is, put it in the budget. But realistically, you're going to be doing engineering and you're also going to be looking at half a million dollars in the first year. And then so much in the second year. And then finally in the third year, we're in the payout. So I'd rather budget that way than say, well, we're going to carry over 1.9 million. And then that's just to me, it, it, it kind of distorts the financials. It makes it look like when you look at the bank accounts, you're hoarding money. You've got a whole bunch of money, but it's committed money. And that's what people don't understand. That money is already spoken for unless you formally detach that project from that commitment. And otherwise it's there and I have to account for it and I have to reserve. And we're going to talk about it in the budget. But the first thing that you, you should be doing in budgets is you should start budgeting contingency. And no one budgets that. And I've asked that since I came here and it got to the point where I was saying, because you guys are dragging along projects and we have all our money sitting in farmer's bank and we were getting piddly nothing interest, that we were going to take your idle cash and we were going to, that was my suggestion, take that idle cash and invest it. And that way we can take the interest and the earnings from that over time until you actually need it, pull that money back when you needed it. And then we would use the rest as, as a contingency fund for each department. Unfortunately for us, we didn't have to do that because farmers started paying some really good return. And we ended up with our interest accounts going from $2,000 a month to, uh, not a month, from $2,000 a year to somewhere in the neighborhood of, um, $105,000, which makes a lot more sense. So, um, we, we dropped that because we were, we were being treated a little bit differently as far as the interest was concerned. But as you spend that money, that interest goes down and you're set to spend a lot of money right now. And as you guys do that, that contingency thing that I just told you about, start budgeting for it. But when we, when we put it in an account, we establish an account for contingencies for each department, you guys need to set the control over that. It's not, whoop, just grab it from the contingency willy-nilly. No, you guys, you put it there for you to control how that money's to be spent. So if you ordinance it or you resolve it through a resolution, that account to be established by each, by each of the departments as the money goes in there as it's budgeted. And we'll do it right after they budget it, we'll move that money in there. So it's tucked away for the, what you don't realize will come down the road one day. And then it's controlled by this, by the council as a whole at the time they need it. They have to come ask for it. That's just my suggestion.
Tom, can I make a copy of the hard copy of this budget that we're seeing tonight? Cause I don't see any copies up here.
There isn't. This got, you guys realize, and you're going to get me really frustrated. You guys gave me this budget finalized for me to be putting this together. Usually I have a week to do this. I had one day and it took me all day to get the presentation ready and the numbers in there. And how many times did I get stopped by people asking to go over their budget and hear some more things? And we were modifying it up till one o'clock this afternoon. I was good enough to get one copy. I tried to get it on their tablets, but the file was too big to go on.
And Tom just re-rap.
I'm aware.
So we need to cut stuff out of the budget to make that smaller so you can send it to us where more than half of it. We save paper, we save money.
I was planning on getting everybody a copy of the budget and they will get a copy of the budget. But that's, uh, not, that's a hundred pages you're looking at a.
Just do them front and back.
It's still going to take a while, probably.
At least make one copy. I would like a copy. I'm the treasurer.
Give her that one.
Thank you. And this is what we're going to be seeing, right?
On the big screen.
Well, you're not seeing budget. You're seeing a presentation of the highlights of that budget. You've reviewed every component of that budget.
In other words, the numbers we see are.
The numbers you see up there are exactly what's in there, but it's not going to be those pages. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Long as what we see is in this.
Now, if I had a week, you would have had it all in front of you. And you would have.
Let me thank Tom.
My gosh.
Well, I think everybody's okay. We're just taking a deep breath here. We're fine. So I want to say one thing and to all these departments, and they're not all here. But since study sessions have happened over the last month or so, there's been a little bit of whittling going on from all of them, all of them, general included. And so I would say in the last three days or more, there's been a lot of whittling going on because as this thing becomes a living document, it became obvious that we needed, you heard night before last, when we spent five hours. And so the PD, the chief did his thing last night. I know, I'm not too mad one, but Stewart, I'm sorry. Tom and I met with Jeff down here on the holiday and it took several hours to go over his and did some pretty good shopping. And I, I guess everybody was contributed to that. So I want to say kudos to the department head that's been working on this and giving it. And I know PD, you know, you're right, we complimented and they complimented your budget chief. And then I call you and say, hey, can you do, I think I called you. I don't know how you got the word, but can, can we do a little more? And you did, you came up $19,000, I think. So, uh, everybody's working together to get this thing where it needs to be. So, uh, I just want to say kudos to those guys. And, and, and I totally agree that we can, we need to come up with a better scenario plans. And, and some of it is everybody, it's all, all of our responsibilities. I mean, when we, when we start looking at these dates, I mean, I've sat here with, with you guys and we, we take 30 minutes trying to figure out a date. And, and it doesn't always work, right? Cause everybody's got a life. So we all just have to come together and figure out the best way to get it done, get it done quicker and give Tom. I think it all, and, and he's going to have a heart attack one of these days. And I don't mean.
It'll be in about an hour.
I don't mean that sarcastically.
That's going to happen the first time all the budgets come in.
Well, they probably do.
No, that's when you'll have.
We changed itself about two years ago and said, we're definitely going to get this done December or something.
What I'm trying to say is don't be critical of the fact that you don't have everything that you need right now, because I got it day before you guys are getting this presentation. And there is a ton of work that needs to be done.
Go back to Mr. Tedford's statement. And to make sure that we're clear, the council has an expectation that department head budgets will be in by November 1st to Tom. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're expecting and we're clear. Okay. And, and that's my job, as you know.
I, I know.
And I will, they know that. And they don't, they don't all comply. And that's my job to take care of that. And I'll, I will be hard next year on it. So.
Unfortunately, everybody knows that the state law is February 1st. There's no secrets there.
There's dragging of feet. As I'm giving kudos, I'll also say there is dragging of feet. Various reasons.
But it's fair to Tom. It's unfair to us.
No, I agree.
And it's unfair to the citizens down that pay taxes for us to be able to make good decisions on those items.
You can agree more, absolutely.
And it, and it comes back to a November 1st deadline.
So that process will get better. That's my, that's my commitment to that this year. We'll do a better job of that. And when I say we, all of us. Thank you very much. And, and no joke, that I, I was sitting in my office today thinking, okay, today's the day we start reminding them about next, this year's budget or next year's budget. So.
Snakes up. I mean, it's, you put it on the calendar.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Ralph.
There is that.
Ralph.
All right, with that.
October 1st, not November 1st.
You want it.
You.
You want October.
When I get the budgets from them, there's a lot of work that has to go in to get it ready for when you guys set review dates. So I need the budgets to be able to go back and tweak things that they, usually when they submit a budget, there's a lot of back and forth. So if you set November as the date and you set a week later for your review, I'm not going to have it ready.
Okay.
So you got to give me the lead time. That's why we told you, we told them it's October.
This guy that runs the town can set October 1st as a date. We want to be able November 1st to start setting dates for our.
Right, but Ralph said the budgets need to be to me by November 1st. It needs to be to me by October.
There's only a few department heads here. I know, I've been in their shoes too. I was a department head one time and I know the feeling of, uh, you don't want to turn anything in that's not adequate. And, and I know how that feels. So you're kind of holding back to make sure that you got probably more information than he needs at that moment. You know, if you just got something in, right, Tom? Uh, I mean, I know you don't want just these papers that says, hey, we're spending money. But, but get, we'll, we'll talk about that in department.
Yeah, that's an operational thing. We work backwards. You guys set the dates that you want to have the budget reviews for each of the departments and when it, when those dates are, and we work back from there. Um, and it goes to what Steve said in that I said, what you're going to see tonight and what we're going to do tonight should have been a budget study session. You should say, here, let me present to you, this is what the whole budget looks like. And then you discuss it, maul it over, kick things out. All the discussions you have that, um, you have concerns about, we hash out and then you come back after those, those changes or modifications are made and approve it. That's the, that's the right way to do it.
So do we need to do that? Set dates at the October meeting or the November meeting? Start giving you dates?
Dates. Go through your calendar and set it, any, any one of your city council meetings all throughout the year, you could say, hey, do we, do we, can we settle on a date right now in November that is a good one for? And I, I would recommend you, instead of three that we had this year, you have four. And that's because you saw how long the three that we did last, there's, those were huge. Water sewer has to go through a commission first, so we're going to have to get them. Parks has to go through the commission first. So those are things I have to concern myself with before it comes to you. And then you have the option of saying, I, I reject it, send it back. Here's some changes we need made. Look at it again. And then the water commission will have to revisit it. But you have to, you have to deal with that. That's why you don't want to push the envelope to the last minute. You can set dates anytime, but the, when you set.
So you've heard my commitment and I mean it. Every month. So I would ask that the council also commit yourselves to attending these meetings. We had, uh, out of those three, we didn't have a full, I don't know that we ever got a full attendance. And I know things come up. I'm there. I got kids, I got grandkids, I got, I got family. But that's got to be a commitment from, from the council members to attend. Because if you miss one, as Steve kind of pointed out, or Mr. Tedford pointed out, you know, they're spread out and I don't know how else to do that. But you got to be here. Because you come in the next month and we're doing one or next week and you don't know what was said the week before about, about, uh, fire. Anyway, that's my two cents on that. With that, we'll go back up to the top. Uh, number one is a resolution to adopt 2025 city of Greenwood budget. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Tom.
It's going to give you like a, an abridged version of all that detail I used to give you in the previous years. Uh, the first thing I want to start out with is the budgeted revenue to the budgeted expense. This was from the 22 period. I'm doing post COVID period rather than considering the COVID periods because there was an anomaly in the COVID years. This is now more stabilizing out. You'll see that the budgeted revenues that generated, the budgeted revenues are the blue line that, and this is typical of how we budget. But the red line is the budgeted expense. We tend to always seem to budget more expense. And what is a balanced budget? It's spending within your revenue streams. And anything that is net plus goes into contingencies. Usually you build a contingency that way, but I'm actually asking for contingencies in the future to be, um, actually budgeted. In your personal life, you, you should, in order to be, um, kind of solvent is a way to look at it, you pay yourself first. And if you can't, because of the economy and how everything's running right now, you would, um, you would basically spend up to the revenue you have. And if you have to need to spend more, you incur either debt or you find another way to earn money. Or you do without. Those are your three ways. And it's the same way in the business world. You either cut expenses if you have a need where you just, you're at a situation where you can't, um, you're not in a system where you're making the amount of money that you need in order to be able to fulfill the, uh, expense responsibilities. You either would have to cut expenses and do without, in other words, raise revenues or a combination of both. You could, and some of the raising revenues in our situation would be grants. Now water sewer has an option to raise rates, but when they do, they have to balance that rate increase with who's, who's, who's that rate increase on the shoulders of? And it's on the shoulders of the customers of them. Not, not the city sales and use types, for instance, would be anybody that comes into the city of Greenwood and utilizes our service. So it's spread amongst people that aren't even residents here, but the residents benefit from it. However, that's not the case in the water sewer. The water sewer's rates are, uh, germane and on the backs of just the people who are actually utilizing the services. So they have, they have that to consider as well. Some of the things I want you to realize in this case is that there's capital in this and capital is the large expense that's, uh, causing a lot of this disparity between the two, the budget lines. This is carryover. A lot of that's carryover expense from projects that were not completed. So that we go to the actual revenue to the actual expense. This is what I showed you last year in 23, actually, um, it was in January, it was end of the year. The 21, 22 period, the expenses were down, but you see the revenue is sort of flat. The actual revenue line, uh, crossed, the expenses crossed in 23. And it's 24, it's the same way. So that's what raised the biggest concern back in 23, when I was sharing all this with you. Then we look at the actual revenue to the budgeted revenue. That's our actual was, our budgeted revenues, this, our actuals, this blue line. This is still coming off of the ARPA money. And this is where we started more, uh, normalizing our actual revenue streams back to what it would normally be. So we, we, we had a little bit of a hiccup in that, that line in the extent that the 2024 year, the county sales tax didn't actually perform the way we thought it would. The reason that it's not really dramatic is because we budgeted a four and a half percent increase in the city sales and use tax, and it came in over six and a half percent or right at six and a half percent. So if you combine the tax revenues, we were pretty much, it was a wash. Wasn't that far apart. This is the actual expense to budgeted expense from 21 to 25. And I'm showing you the actual, uh, 25 number here. But you'll see the 24 is actual expense that we incurred and this was the budgeted expense. So it's contrary, it's reverse of what the actual budgets to budgets were. You're looking at how we budgeted, which, which was this way, revenue is lower than expenses, but it actually turns out to be, it actually turns out to be the opposite in case, in this case, where the actual expense is actually lower than the budget. So this is something I just added. This is the, um, actual to budget operating. Because the other graphs that you just saw included all your capital and capital was a large number. This is taking the capital noise out and this is just your operating revenues and operating expenses. So this is what it would take if you didn't do any capital projects or buy any equipment or did any of that, which is where the large dollars are. And this is just to maintain your department. The budgeted operating expenses are the red line. And these are the actual operating expenses. So we're, we're creating a situation that if this, this may have to be looked at throughout the year for sure. This is your budgeted operating. So I'm thinking this was a problem. So the city sales and use tax, we came in at 6.4%, 6.42 to be exact. We budgeted four and a half. This is something you already have seen throughout the, uh, city councils meetings. This would be the county sales tax. This is what we, um, the one reason why we budget flat. Our budget is going to be 2.6 million dollars. We're assuming that we're not going to increase or decrease. And that was all at your purview. Just so you know, the city sales and use tax for 2025 is. Just so you know, the city sales and use tax for 2025 is 3%. We're looking for a 3% growth. And that was the number prior to all the COVID situation that kind of went, this was the COVID years right here. And everything changed at that point. And we're kind of normalizing back. So if you looked at what our change over year over year, we were right at about an average of 3%. And that's what looks like we wanted to fall back to. The thought process with you as well as with the A and P commission was that they would rather experience the joys of coming in a little higher in revenue, but budget more conservatively, a little bit lower because we're going to hold down the actual revenue stream. So that they don't go hog wild with something that may not materialize. In this case, they went conservative and you guys went conservative in your 3%. I actually had a little higher than that, but so this is how it panned out. The 11359 was the actual from 24. And then we're looking at the split between the actual 1% and the three quarters cent sales tax for the fire department, the street department and the parks department. And that's where they would be getting their a million six to split three ways. 2.2 million goes to the water department. And that's in the budgets as you see them today. This was the county sales tax. Again, we talk about this 261. You see it's all flowing together. This amount that was listed here, this 51,000 is the amount you approved to a day, a day and a half ago for the boys clubs contract. So it's 51,000. That's in their contract. You do have the Sebastian County Retirement Center up here, but that's being paid out of the actual general fund, not the, not through county sales tax. LOPF, though, is still being paid. There's $40,000 that goes to offset fire and police. And it's allocated based on their expense totals to be able to do a pre-distribution amount. That's actually done right off the top before the actual taxes are distributed in this percentage by each of these departments. So for any one of these departments outside of sidewalk, because the sidewalk is a virtual account under the street department. For you to say, we're going to give a little bit more to admin of justice to bolster their budget, or we're going to move it to animal control, or we're going to move it from animal control to parks, you're really accomplishing nothing to the general fund. Because all those are operating accounts that gets that money within the general fund. It's part of the restricted or unrestricted, rather, funds of general fund. So this money goes to them to support and bolster their operations for the purposes of their budgets. So you can make one look good, but if you pull from another, you're making that less good. And or you're, you're tying them a little bit more. So if a specific department, however, has a large surplus being created year over year, similar to what we did with admin of justice, they, they generated a lot of money over three or four years that we needed to reallocate that. So the 1% was in admin of justice, went to sidewalk until we spend down the surplus that is in their actual fund, their virtual fund. So it benefits that other department that's picking up the, the revenue stream. So there's something to think about in there. Right now, all of them are not sitting in a situation, there's two that are surplus and all the rest are deficits with the revised budget. Here's the fund balances. This is the, this is the key. This is what's in the bank. Right now, at the end of 1231, end of 2024, we had 17,029,474. That's on your last cash flow statement that you received and it's on the balance sheet as well. And it's broke out in this fashion. I have separated the street department to show the three funds that are underneath the street department, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. There's a reason why I broke it down. But every single one of these that are listed here, with the exception of sewer and sewer and water are a different animal because they're being impacted by the rate increase. The amounts that are listed there are consolidated for reporting purposes. We don't actually report them separately. We report them consolidated and audits are also done that way. Every other department, the general fund is taking out a million, $26,000 from their current fund status. So they're going from a 3.9 and that's the, the assigned, which is the restricted funds. And I will show you a list of those in a second. And the unassigned unrestricted monies, which are used to offset deficit spends on or unbalanced operational departments within the general fund. So what's really happening here is the city sales and use tax for Water Sewer is pulling out 8.5 million. And we knew when we did the rate increase that of the 6 million or just under 6 million, when we started the rate increase that was in the bank, we knew that, that that was committed money. That wasn't money that would, you could just willy nilly use for the, the projects that they wanted to do a rate increase on. We literally, they did list them in the rate increase list. And we went and pulled out what was projects that were already committed in that $6 million. Now, this year, they're looking to, if they do the budget, if they complete all the tasks that are in there, they're going to be spending down every bit of the 6.7 million and an additional 1.8. So now you understand why I've been talking with bond companies to find out. At what point do we do a betterment and improvement bond for the Water Sewer and they can use it for any, any infrastructure needs, any capital expense that's there for these projects that are in place. This number, the 6.7 million does reflect, as it says down here at the bottom, the 972,000 that was restricted by you through resolution from the surplus created by the ARPA money that we used for the police department's salaries in 2023. It is in this number. So 8.5 million is what they're looking to spend this year. As far as AMP tax, they're, they're still a little healthy. I mean, this is with their budget. Right now, they have a 29,482 estimated to be next year. Taking into consideration what they have to spend and they, they usually try to spend as much as possible. They do not like to hoard that money. They give that grant, those grants out to the people that come. Sometimes they have to turn them away or reduce the amount of the request. But that's all driven by the 1% sales tax. That's your situation as it is today from the budget. The general fund, now I'm going to go show you exactly how the departments with all the changes that were made and all the discussions we had since the last meeting we conducted. You started with 2.8 million. There is a general fund department's 500,000, $500,000 deficit. It comes from these accounts right here. Fire, a deficit of 192, I mean, a surplus of 192,024. Police had a deficit of 713,000. 530 from animal control deficit. Parks had a 13,000. These are, these are where they are asking for the, the, those monies to be funded more than what their revenue streams were from the actual unrestricted general fund. The planning department, $35,000 was a surplus. They usually do have a surplus. That's a little high. It's not normally that high. When you look at the budget for 2025, you're looking at the general fund at 269,000 now. Remember that was actually a deficit. Every single one of these was a deficit from the discussion we had on, what day is today? It was Tuesday into Wednesday. So what we saw here was this dollar amount, when it was presented to you, was $400,000. It was absolutely a no-go. My threshold, my comfort level, take it or leave it, was a million. I don't like that number going below a million, but you're right at that threshold. And so that's a, that's a tread carefully walk. The fire department now is down to $63,000 deficit. There's a swing from last year and that has to do solely with the addition. There would be a surplus when they, they postponed the implementation of the three for the full-time fire department. So this 63,000 comes from the health insurance net and with other little things that we've done. Police department is 890,000 deficit. That was over 900,913, I think is what it was when we started and they, they made great strides in getting that down. Animal controls, 18,894, just in their operations. A lot of that has to do with animal control expenses for the dogs that are picked up and housed. Parks department is at 19,000. They could do some shifting if they needed to. But I started looking at all the accounts and said, based on the tax law that was implemented for what, what those monies are to be used for. I would be hard pressed to move anything else over to their, to core structure or a pavilion or something. Everything that we could move over there, we have in, in past years. And then the planning department took out the drainage study and that's where it ends up. So we, as I think we left on Tuesday, well, one o'clock Monday morning, I mean, Wednesday morning, you had 100, $1,200,000 at that time and that's about where we landed. So that's pulling out of the unrestricted or unassigned general fund, seven, about three quarters of a million dollars. Takes it down 41.8%. So budget study sessions are key. The restricted amounts, these are the accounts that are restricted. One thing to note is the city sales and use tax for fires, 1.2 million. It's going to go to 1.3 million and, and in their budget. One of the things you have to note is the expense that's potentially coming up for the fire truck in 2026. You also have to know that we have a sunset on that tax coming up with them, parks and street in 2026. So the million dollars, I think is the number I was given. It's roughly about a million. Isn't that right Stuart? For your truck? So you're looking at a million dollar operating loan for five years, which will be paid for out of the city sales and use tax. Now you say, well, why can't some of that be used for the full-time firemen? That's because the law won't allow that. That's not what that tax was established for. So everybody knows that. I, I, I'm not going to make the assumption you did though, but it, that cannot bear the cost. So the full-time fire department salaries would have to come from that sales tax that makes up the majority of their revenue. And that county sales tax, if you go to the full-time to the extent that was presented or projected, and even if you did that grant, that's just a slow death. Instead of a quick one. Is, it's not an, it's not able to, general fund is not able with its current revenue stream to support that. Which is why we wanted to sit down and have a meeting or a strategy meeting on what's additional revenue streams, what's a better plan? Let's talk about it. Right now, it's a, it's a little bit too quick for me to be able to give you some good suggestions of what needs to be done. But I'd like to sit down and look at additional things that you need. Now, as far as the city sales and use tax is concerned, you're, if you're looking at a six and a half million dollar fire station, you're going to be looking at a bond. And we've got Water Sewer at a, looking at a 5.7 million dollar bond. Streets looking at three and a half million dollars in 2027, based on what you're going to see in a minute. Parks is looking at a, they're, they're right now at $200,000 all in, right? To start 2025. They're going to end slightly above their threshold of 250,000 in the city sales and use tax account. And they, they have incurred a $750,000 operating loan that they're right in the middle of, in their second year of paying on for the splash pad. So that's going to significantly look like it's going to increase and that's not always a good term. That's a four-letter word. As far as the operating departments is concerned, this is how I looked at the trend. So back in 21, all the departments under general that were operating departments, we were deficit of 426 budgeted, but the reason I wasn't panicking is because I was watching how you were, guys were doing the budgets and how they were managing those budgets and what those costs were historically coming in at. And I noticed that police would always come in way under what they budgeted, or not always, but in the previous years prior to 21, there seemed to be a significant, well over a hundred thousand dollar gap between what was actual and what was budgeted. And a lot of that had to do with the turnover in their force. And, and the people that leave takes a while for them to come on and that's a cost saving to you, but it's also a drag on their ability to, to operate. So when you looked at the general fund, we were budgeting heavy, a little bit lower in the actual surplus line and we were always coming in higher than what was budgeted. So in 21, we budgeted 279, 444. And you see down here how it parlayed in the bottom. What's covering a lot of this police cost is the franchise taxes, which are sitting in this revenue right up here, or this surplus number in, in the general department. But as that surplus deteriorates, the franchise taxes are being consumed by other responsibilities and expenses within the general fund. So you got 83,022 and you came in at 211,000 actual. Down here, you had a budgeted deficit of 303, came in at a surplus of 47 all in with this column. Budget for 23 is an anomaly because of the police department bearing the 1.125 million dollars, which was the ARPA second tranche that came in, or the amount remaining from the first tranche and the second tranche. So that was all distributed to the salaries, which generated a actual surplus for them, but you'll notice they came in higher than the surplus. So the trend worked. It just worked in the opposite way that they still had some gaps to do to mostly their savings from not having a full contingent of police officers. Now, as far as the 24 is concerned, we budgeted a deficit of 338 and I was raising concerns all in these years. But you look at the actual, we hit a deficit in 24. 179,000 on a 338. This, this is one of the few times that you don't see the, the amount from the general department actually being higher than what was budgeted. So the, we realized a lesser amount. So now we're actually seeing this trend go much more negative. We're seeing the four down to a 269. That was actually a loss or a deficit before it became a surplus. And the two departments that are surpluses right now are the planning department and the general department. Everything else is still in a deficit. And that takes out about 719,000. You saw that in the actual numbers previous. So now you know why we need to be really looking at wants and needs. We need to be looking at doing a better job of managing the, the department budget and or looking for additional revenue streams. I love the conversation that we had on Tuesday regarding grants. And Mayor hits it every time we, he has an opportunity, you know, go after those grants. Police did a great job getting grants for a lot of their expenses. That's wonderful. Everybody should be looking for those opportunities. Now we get to the street department. The only reason I'm bringing street department up is because street department's a different fund. They have their own monies. And street department was on our radar for the last three years. I was doing this very presentation to you every year. And I just want to follow up so that you can see where we are. The street fund is one fund. All of the three that are listed under here are virtual accounts or what we call subaccounts under that street department. So when you look at our bank account, it's $4,131,900 as of 24, end of 24. At the end of 25, we're going to be at $2,030,000 or a pullout if the budget is obtained and realized, a 2,001 reduction. And now I'm going to show you where that comes from. The street fund, we, we account for these separately. This totals that amount. 2,089,000, we're going to have a balance of 1,007 or take out about 309,000 from the street O and M. That was larger until you pulled out the excavator from the budget at the budget study session. The city sales and use tax street funds, they have 1.9 in it as of the end of, at the beginning of this year. This is reflecting the end of 24. And we're looking to pull out that plus $50,000. So you're going to be reducing it 1.9. Now I'm not panicking about the fact that that's a negative number there. Primarily because it's a virtual account. It's covered in this 2,030 that's up here. That's, that's the one I worry about. This, what's in that checking account. But I actually do kind of worry about this city sales and use tax for a lot of reasons, because I know what's down the road for them, pardon the pun. It's the street department. But I actually do kind of worry about this city sales and use tax for a lot of reasons, because I know what's down the road for them, pardon the pun. It's a street department. I know what's coming up, because we sat down and we pushed off projects into future years. But you all know what happens when that does. You have to incur more expense just, just related to inflation. So the sidewalk funds are the only thing that has a little bit of health to it until I tell you the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say. There is a second phase of the sidewalk project that is rather expensive. So we're going to have to look at what, what we're going to do in order to be able to fund that. We don't, I don't know really what the lock-in from RDOT would be on that grant. We're responsible for twenty percent of it, and so that's technically not really in this budget yet. The money that's generated there is from the city, uh, county rather tax, that's distributed to them. Permit fees is the other thing that comes in from the sidewalk fund to help maintain the current sidewalks we have. So that's, that's a little bit about what's going on in the street department. But now I want to show you even further down the road, pardon the pun, what happens with where we are. I just showed you the fifty thousand for twenty-five. Let's go into twenty-six. So we take the fifty thousand, we carry it forward. Let's estimate that we're going to get about a three percent growth, hopefully, for the city sales and use tax. That's an additional revenue stream of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. They have already listed on their books that's been pushed off that you saw on the, the meeting Tuesday in their twenty-six capital projects of one point eight million dollars. That's going to leave them at the end of the year at one point three million. And with their operating side, which I just showed you up here, at some point, this isn't going to be able to cover it, because they're occurring expenses here too. And their capital items, their capital expenditure items, or the large hand um, fixed asset itself that you can touch and feel, it comes out of that line item. So that's, that's concerning. So then you start twenty-seven. And by the way, that is your year that you have um, the sunset on the tax, this tax. So this estimated revenue for city sales and use tax in twenty-seven is going to be three percent as well. Let's just keep that going. Start with this one million three deficit. And then you look at the twenty-seven capital projects that are now pushed out to twenty twenty-seven, and we know what those are. They're in that budget. It's two million three. Now you're at three million seventy-five thousand. Something's got to give. And if I go farther, it's just going to get worse. So they're woefully underfunded for what they need to do. I wanted you to see it. Now I'm going to show you this. This is the, you know these numbers because you get them every month in the city council meetings. This is the total capital spend for the city, not for just one department or not just water sewer. We budgeted in twenty-three, we budgeted eight million dollars, and we spent three point one on our capital projects, which includes street resurfacing. We spent eighty-five on a million five. But we only spent thirty-nine point two seven percent. There's a lot of reasons. You'll talk to the directors. They'll tell you what those reasons are, really good reasons. But there's things that we need to get past, because anything that causes that delay is causing um, additional monies. So thirty-nine point two seven percent is not something to do a happy dance on, but it is the highest percentage that's happened since I've been here in the capital spend. Now let's go to twenty-four. Twenty-four, we budgeted fourteen million, well, fifteen million seventy-one thousand in expenses, including the street resurfacing. And we've only spent twenty for year, for the twenty-fourth uh, year, twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven point five three percent. Three quarters of the money is still on the table and still being carried over, but it's committed money. And then here's all the committed money right now for twenty twenty-five. This is the twenty twenty-five's capital budget. You, you see every department and what they have and what was already approved in all the budgets. And you see street, there's their two point eight million dollars in amounts for city sales and use tax, and there's the street department operations. You'll see fires amounts that are listed there. Most of this one hundred and sixty-three thousand um, operations, that's really city sales and use tax fire, because that one sixty-three is the cost, and I didn't actually move that, but I thought about it afterwards. That's um, the sprinkler system for the, for the actual fire station next door. The large lion's share of the cost is coming from the water and the sewer departments, the five million two and the five million six, and that's how it breaks out, so. And, and they know it, and they have rates to cover that. So they're um, they're starting to collect that now that what they're on right now is the potential debt service. That's what's being collected. It's a fixed amount. It's going to affect both water and sewer in very, in different percentages, but. So the total is fourteen million nine oh one in the capital. And the last thing I want to talk about, and then you can ask, and all the questions you'd, you'd like. I know you're writing them down, so. Um, budgeted compensation. This is the compensation since two thousand twenty-one for all the departments. And what our total budgeted payroll is, no, this is not and related. This does not include the taxes. This is just the base salaries, the salary cost, all the way through, plus the awarded COLA in each of those years is listed right down below it. So you see, this is what was actually awarded, not what the COLA was. No COLA. And you'll see, we started at three million one. We're right now in twenty twenty-five budgeting a four million five. Now, there's a saying that says that you want in, in a normal operation, in a normal business, uh, well, for-profit operation. There are exceptions to the rule, and I'll tell you that in a second, but a normal operation, you'd want your payroll to be no more than a third of your actual expenses. Your payroll is, your employees are the, you're the most costly expense that you'll have, and it's usually set that you don't want that going over a third. Thirty percent is what most people target. But when you look at our budgeted, what is the payroll for this year and all these years? What is the payroll to our budgeted revenue? It's twenty-seven point eleven percent. Now, revenue is a different animal. That's your ability to cover that payroll percentage. So you, you need to know if you have the revenue and to what extent does that salary drain your actual revenue stream. And then your budgeted expense of twenty-seven million, most of that is in capital. That's a sixteen point four percent. Whoa, this little ball's moving all over the place. This um, payroll as a dispense of budgeted expense is sixteen point four. That is heavily factoring in the, for the capital. So capital is uh, equipments and projects. Now, the projects are um, labor intensive, so you would know your, your employees have to deal with that. But the rule in, for municipalities, because we as a municipality are labor intensive, there is a uh, a different rule of thumb. Usually, an industry or a business that's labor intensive, they say that forty percent's not unheard of and it's acceptable. And we, I mentioned that when, if you look at this bottom line, total budgeted operating expense to the payroll percentage, we did run years where we were forty percent. We're now down to thirty-eight point nine eight, nine three percent. So that, while the number is high as compared to our operating expense, that's where we remove the noise of all the capital. That's what your operation would be, even if you didn't do a capital project, or you didn't buy a, a piece of equipment. It's thirty-eight point nine three percent. So it's a little bit above the thirty-three, but below the forty percent. You're in that range where it's acceptable in the eyes of a municipality. Now, there is one thing. This is budget. Now I want to show you the last slide. It's brand new. And it's the slide where we show you what actually happened for each of those departments. So this is the general, and this is, this is how you'd look at it. This would be your budget, and this would be the actual underneath for each of the years from twenty-one to twenty-four, and this is your budget for twenty-five. And I did that for every department. The anomaly is this one right here. It looks like we've only paid out a hundred ninety-two thousand, but remember that was offset by a one point one two five million. The one point one two five million, just for illustration purposes, if we didn't get the ARPA money, it's been factored back into the actual down here. So it gives you a more realistic look at what your actual would have been had you not had ARPA. So your budget is a surplus. You, you actually underspent your budget by a hundred and twenty-five, by ninety-seven thousand, a hundred and ninety in twenty twenty-three as a whole as a city, three hundred and eighty-two in the uh, two thousand twenty-four. So for the four-year period, we had a fourteen point nine million, roughly fourteen eight five. And we actually came in at fourteen oh fifty-nine, which is a spot of three quarters of a million dollars difference between our actual. And a lot of that is the fact that your employees come and go, and you have to hire new ones, and so you'll, you can see the departments that hit it pretty close, and you'll see the departments that had some obvious turnover. But for an average of the four years, we tend to miss the budget, which, in a good way, by um, five percent, roughly around five percent. So if we can look at that, the increase between twenty-five's budget and the budget from twenty-four is four point four one percent increase. It's like you gave everybody a four point four one percent increase. That's not how it worked, but I mean, that's, that's the average. And then you look down at the bottom and you see that if we were to take five percent off of that, that's what I would anticipate we hit as far as the actual is concerned, based on turnover historically. Could be more, could be less, but if I had to give you a guesstimation, it would be based on a number. And there you are. Riveting wasn't it?
I'm glad you didn't go over that at one o'clock in the morning.
When you, when you have the uh, the, you have the uh, amount of COLA, you know, you had it right there at the two point three percent, you know, and I was wondering, you know, uh, if there was a, a way where you factor in the, the merit raises, you know, to say how much percent of the merit raises?
Well, okay, they're in these numbers. The merit raises are in these numbers, yeah. So um, I could, I could do an uh, extract merits from that to see how much that influenced that total. Sure. Another thing that would influence the numbers in twenty-five would be um, additional staffing. Anybody that added to their department or?
Well, that's what I was going to ask, how critical your third party or fourth or whatever?
You want to pull it out? You go right ahead.
I mean, I
That's your purview.
I mean, we're, I'll work, I'll see a bunch of red numbers.
I can work seventy hours a week for one more year.
Well, you know, I, I, you know.
I'm just kidding you.
I hope so, because I don't have the take attitude from the finance director.
I'm just kidding you.
I'm just telling you, all I hear about is we're hemorrhaging money.
I agree with you. That's why I told you to take it out.
We're going to be broke, and we keep adding employees.
If you want to take it out as a council, you go right ahead. That's your purview. You're not going to hurt my feelings.
I mean, you know, I guess you've done a great job, and you're working your tail off, and yes, you probably need more help, but all we can do is budget on the tax revenues that come in. I'm always using the bad guy that talks about taking out the COLAs and the merits, and everybody cries and whines about morale. But all we get to do is base on taxes that come into the city of Greenland.
Totally agree.
And we try to pay them back out however we can through roads, pavement, uh, holiday pay, whatever.
I know. I paid, I painted that same picture.
Right, exactly. Very well. But, so we can ask for, wants and needs is the best thing there is. That's the best comment you can have. Um, yeah, I mean, we need a bunch of full-time firemen. We cannot afford full-time firemen. We needed somebody else in the finance office. Well, we may not be able to afford them. Uh, I mean, so we can bicker around and throw numbers around, but we, we can, we can only, if, I mean, we can't, if the money's not coming in tax revenues, then we may have to change the way. We can't go buy the Mercedes. We may have to go ahead and buy a Toyota Passat every now and then. So if you're driving one Ford Pinto.
Right.
So, I, I hate to.
I totally agree with you.
It's, it's unfortunate that you're in the pickle, because you're the one telling us that we're low on money, and yet you're the one wanting to hire. That's just how it is.
I'm hoping I earned that, Keith.
Well, I, I, you know, I get that, but, I mean, I don't, I, I, to AC's point, I'd be curious what kind of the, the merit raise number total would be if it may, I mean, if it's a two percent difference, well, what, I mean, I don't know how much the merit raise total is. I mean, that's the only moving number as opposed to laying off employees. There's the other option. We always hear about morale and team, all that stuff. Uh, well, I mean, we, people can be laid off. That's coming down the road, unfortunately, you know, but I mean, I hate to cancel the parks department. That's a great deal, but that's a, that's a, a want and not a need.
Like one, one way.
Ultimately, in the big picture.
Right, right. I think one, one place to start would be putting a, a combined cap on the COLA and merit raises. Say, you know, some years where inflation's bad, I mean, it may be five percent, and that's the max. Maybe no merit raises beyond five, that five percent is awarded to anybody. In years where inflation is low, maybe one point three percent, then the, and the cap is still five percent, then we can give merit raises up to that five percent. You know, whether you give them one percent, two percent, but it never adds up to five, you know, more than five percent in a given year. Because now, you know, you got, people are getting two point three percent COLA raise, and then you got some that are getting seven percent merit raise, eleven percent. I mean, it's across the board. And so I think that would be, in my opinion, one place to start would be to.
Unfortunately, two point three percent's a joke number, because we just heard the chief of police tell us that or everything is up probably combined forty percent on all four bills.
Well, I mean.
Through insurance, groceries, gas.
And I'll just use the chief, because I remember what, you, what he had said when he did his budget. You know, he'd give, you know, three percent. And, and that, that's, that's a good, good raise, especially when, and I know COLA is keeping you up with the cost of living that's going on.
It doesn't.
But at the bottom line, you know, it's still in the budget. I mean, so you're actually getting a five point three percent raise. The bottom line is a five point three percent raise.
It, it becomes your base.
Yes.
Totally agree. Now, you're, you're not directing this to me. You're directing it to the population. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I don't make those decisions.
I'm just, I'm just saying that would be, in my opinion, a good place to start. And, and it would end maybe some of this grooming amongst staff and people that, you know, this person is getting a, you know, totally absorb it, you know, raise and increase, and, you know, this person's only getting.
Now, we'd established a merit pool where, for a while, where you just said this department gets this X amount of dollars for a merit pool, and they can give it to whatever employee they think.
Yeah.
That's still. Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Correct. Yeah. Yes. Right. There you go. Yeah.
But I think, you know, but again, yeah, we talk in percentages and stuff, I think, I think it would be good to just see this is the dollar amount, you know, from COLA. This is the dollar amount from, you know, merits, just to, you know, just to see. I, I guess the other thing, you know, uh, on this budget here, did, did it reflect getting all the uh, the miscellaneous expenses pulled? Okay.
There's only one, there's two departments that I did not pull that from for a reason, and that is the water sewer department, because that's the commission.
Well, it's the commission, but I mean.
Their dollar amounts are a little more significant, too.
The, uh, yeah, I think it still should be, we should encourage that.
Just wondering if I'd have to go back to them. That's my point.
Well, we're the ones that tell them how much money they have.
Talk to that one.
Well, I don't have to talk to them. The council, the council's the one that says who has the money, who gets the money, and how much they're in.
I'll pull it out in our be, but it's only going to affect them.
Right.
It doesn't affect their general fund situation at all.
Right.
And they're a revenue-producing center, so.
But I think, yeah, I think, yeah, they should strongly be encouraged to, to match what the rest of the city's doing on that.
That's not for me to.
About all this.
Tell them, yes.
COLA and whatnot. The, the wants and needs thing is a great idea. We've, Tom, we've talked about this every year. So what you need are the employees. And, and I echo what the chief said. And I know we have good benefits. There's no doubt it. We talk about this all the time, too. Insurance paid fully. And then thirty-eight percent, whatever it is on the family, that's a good benefit, and you don't get that everywhere.
And your retirement benefit of seven and a half percent.
Yeah, I, I said, we have good benefits. But we don't have anything extraordinarily good, in my opinion. And yeah, the people can go anywhere they want to work, but what our pro, what our goal is, what my goal is, man, is to keep the people that are here, because they are doing a good job. We go through some employees, certainly, uh, but not a lot, to be honest with you. I know police officers are hard to keep, because they don't get paid enough. But, but overall, we do not roll over that many employees, and I got to believe it's due to the, to the benefits and, and the annual COLA that you, and I remember years when we didn't do a COLA, period, and there were a few merits scattered in it. I would rather, if, this is for me, I would rather you look, take a hard look at equipment, and, and I'm not, I don't want Jeff to do without what he needs either, but.
equipment. And, and I'm not, I don't want Jeff to do without what he needs either, but I'm not just talking about him, anybody, any of these, but it's, I'd rather you go back and look at that stuff first. And pull out to get what you want. You, you've got, I mean, they did an extraordinary job. You got, you got, we got back fifty million dollars, right? Which took a lot of, a lot of stuff out. Uh, so.
Unfortunately, the equipment, the, the difference between pay and equipment is that pay compounds.
I understand.
So, I mean, I'm not here to start cutting everybody's pay. I'm just saying, once the equipment's bought, it's there and it obviously is depreciating, but the pay, like we talked about, it's a percentage then.
And sure, and that will always be. You will never change that.
I still, my hundred thousand dollar plan's still in effect.
One time I was working and I, I'd like to maybe see Tom do that, but it's, like you said, we talk about our benefits, we talk about our pay, but I'd really like to see what our benefits actually are. And you know, when you add that in there, like you say, when you add in the, that the employee gets a hundred percent of his insurance covered, that, that he does get seven and a half percent, you know, added to his uh, retirement. Uh, the uh, you know, all the benefits that we do add, you know, to say that this is it in addition to, you know, your compensation and stuff, because a lot of times that just gets kind of you know, hidden in there and all the um, all the noise and stuff and.
Mine tires, oil changes, gas.
The uh, you know, I mean, just uh, it, uh, I, I mean, you know, I, I worked for a company where they did that, you know, and it really is an eye opener to see, you know, how much that the, you're getting in, in addition to your, you know, your compensation, just as your uh, hourly wage or salary, whatever. The uh, the uh, but the, I guess the other thing is, I was wondering, uh, on the fire department, we talked about the sprinkler system, of course, then we talked about, you know, you needed that for a manned facility and stuff, you know, uh, what would be the, I, and you had it broken out there and I just didn't, I couldn't see it again, but if we uh, forego the sprinkler and paid off the uh, engine, you know, I mean, what kind of savings would we experience, you know, from that?
Well, yeah, that's an immediate cash flow issue because right now you're only, you're only bearing the debt service on it for another year. I mean, I, it's.
Right, I know, it's just one more year.
I mean, he, he's got the money to pay it off now if he wanted to with the one point five million, but what is his plans? I don't know what he's got in the works. You know, I asked him about, what about sprinkler system at second building that you have? Does he wanna do that? He said, yes, but it's not in the budget. No, I'm not, I'm, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what your future plans for your city sales and use tax are if you were to use it to pay off your truck.
Well, what do you think, chief, just about that idea of, of uh, foregoing the sprinkler to pay off the uh, engine right now?
It's a good cash flow issue, yeah.
At this point, you're just paying principal.
Pretty much, yes. Yeah. You have a year and a half left. Best buy rate, like same as cash, five years, same as cash.
I said that to somebody the other day. They said, what?
I was like, oh my gosh.
Can we talk about city sales news tax straight about it? It's fund balance at the end of the year? It being in the red.
I can talk about anything.
Are we able to, are we gonna use just street fund money to make that difference up?
Yes, ma'am. That's how it works.
As you know, we can't pass an upside down budget.
Right now, you gotta realize that's a budget, not the actual. So what we have to realize is that they don't all, they don't always, that's a budget, not an actual. And the budgets, just go back and look at where they fall. That city sales and use tax at a twenty-nine percent spend on their projects right now. If even they do fifty percent, they're still gonna be in the black. It's committed money, but I'm not saying they're gonna spend it and I'm hoping they do. I'm hoping that you guys say no more new projects until you get the ones that are already on the books done.
It just bothered me to see it, the fund balance in red.
I, I.
Because of that state law that says we can't pass an upside down budget, you know.
There, okay, let me go back to that slide, just so you know. This, uh, this is reality, so I'm gonna show them reality. But uh, as far as the budget is concerned, you see this line that says street funds, these numbers, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, those are the actual funds. Those are the actual bank accounts, the ones that have numbers by them. Everything else is virtual. It's our monies that we control in there. So the fifty thousand that's there is consumed in this number.
Make it sure, but it is a city sales and use tax account.
You have these three up and these three are that number. Okay, so I mean, I, I, I'm doing this so that you guys can see the reality of how that's gonna play out down the road. They're not gonna have enough in this number to be able to cover what they have on the books to do. But at a twenty-seven percent year-over-year spend of your amount that you have in capital, which is where this has in it, all capital stuff, you're not gonna, I'm hoping I'm wrong, but I, I, I would be a betting man to say that that's not gonna be realized.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna go with that.
And there's a difference between committed money and available money.
Correct. And that money that's there, that negative fifty thousand, that's committed. Now it can be pushed down the road or you guys can decommit it.
Right.
You could say we're not, we're not gonna do that overlay.
Right.
We're not gonna do that drainage, whatever. We're stopping that. We're gonna redirect those funds to something else. That's always your prerogative.
Well, Mayor, to your point about taking a look at the other parts of the budget to, to possibly cut instead of cutting, I, I would say, um, you know, I'm, I'm not making a motion that we've passed the budget just yet, but I would like to say that we put a, a sixty-day freeze after we adopt the budget on any capital equipment so that we can go back, um, a purchase freeze on any capital equipment that's in the budget, so we can go back and look a little bit more diligently on things that may need to be.
Yeah, I like that. We actually mentioned that to the ninety, ninety.
We mentioned ninety days.
Yeah, we mentioned ninety days. I like a ninety day.
Thanks Casey for showing up and you have nobody. Thank you very much.
Almost, close.
It was mentioned.
Were you watching and you heard?
Did you run down there real quick?
So ninety days is good.
I'm, so that was, I was thought I was never gonna ask, but I've.
It's just the one.
Tim's getting rid of you.
And he's got a bad leg. Oh, well, that's right. You've been training, that's right.
Tom, on page eight, I think there's a Cobra Health Equity not included in insurance health. It's a tiny drop in the bucket. I don't think it's included in the total. Just if you wanna check it.
I didn't hear what you said. What is it?
Page eight of the general.
The Cobra Health Equity?
Yes.
The twelve hundred dollars?
Yeah.
I'm thinking that number's actually gonna go up.
I don't think it's included in the total, is what I'm saying.
Well, it, it was a place marker until she could tell me what the number is.
It's in red, so I don't know.
Yeah.
So. Good.
Right, so that was never formally re-put back in. Technically, we shouldn't have to pay it because we're no longer utilizing that service, but there might be a, a contract out clause and that's what I asked her to go back and look for.
Okay, so my favorite question, I like to ask this every year, when somebody asks me tomorrow, what is the budget of the city of Greenwood? Give me a number.
It's the expense number, twenty-seven million dollars.
Well, I know.
We always do the budget based on the expenses, not the revenue.
Absolutely. I know there's more numbers.
Is there a page in here that, that shows that?
All the juicy numbers, twenty-seven.
Let me go the other way.
Copy that he would see. If someone asks to dig deeper.
Yeah, I showed it. Oh, there it is. Total, total budgeted expenses, twenty-seven million, six sixty. Remember, I did not have time to do all of those pre, those nice things that I usually do. I will be working on those for the next day or so. I did good just to get you what you have.
I think uh, one other thing that I, I just see a discrepancy is on the uh, uh, we have a year-end incentive, you know, for full-time employees, you know, two fifty. I'd like to see that year-end incentive uh, applied to, you know, of a hundred dollars applied to the uh, uh, the fireman at the end of the year. This is gonna only come out to thirty-three hundred dollars. If it, you know, if we had a full staff right now, we have twenty-four, I think, on the books, right, chief? So it'd just be like a, and two of them are already getting a, a full-time, you know, two fifty, but I saw that'd be twenty-two, it'd be twenty-two hundred dollars, but I'm thinking that would just be uh, put everybody kind of on the same playing field.
I mean, we were talking about hemorrhaging money.
Right now, we already have a part-time employee getting a hundred dollars, year-end incentive. So this thing should be equal.
What part-time employee do we have getting that incentive?
The uh, receptionist out front.
What? Why does one part-time get it and others don't?
Okay.
So it, it's the year-end hundred dollar incentive?
Yeah, but.
So you're, you're saying everybody gets it, but they're excluding the firefighters?
Well, because the firefighters are a category called part-paid volunteer. They're not considered part-time employees. But, and a lot of people don't understand that distinction, but I'm just saying that's why.
Now, I, I think maybe some people understand that extinction, but to me, there are an employee.
They're pretty important employees when you need them. Really important employees.
For applying it to, you know, three, uh, which I didn't realize that, they're applying to three.
We do have to find every way we can to incentivize that system to keep going because it beats a full-time fire department. The expenses of a full-time fire department are extraordinary. And I don't know what else we can do to incentivize and get more people to join, but we gotta do something.
I don't have a problem with a hundred dollars for part-time, be, or whatever they're categorized. I don't, I don't think that's a big, it's, it's probably more support, there's no doubt it's more benefit to them than it is a hurt to us, or if that makes sense. I mean, that, if that's an incentive, that's.
I mean, I've heard of sign-on bonuses. If you could make someone sign a contract, that they're not just signing on and getting three thousand dollars and then leaving.
I wonder if that's legal for a.
For a certain amount of time, that may be an incentive to get recruitment.
I wonder if that's legal for the, whatever status our fire department.
Police do it, I think, in cities.
Well, y'all are full-time. I'm just saying as far as what, what Sturridge dealing with as far as the title of his troops. If a sign-on bonus contracts, even a deal.
Volunteer fire?
But the, the, there's municipal uh, slash rural fire departments out here that do give a year-end.
I would imagine that's about a two-minute call to A M L.
Sure.
Hey, Tom, can you look something up real quick?
Just nine.
Cause I don't have the budget. What, what are this, what is the budgeted salaries for the fire department this year? The, the figure for the.
About a hundred and thirty grand total.
It was, it was three hundred and three thousand last year.
The salaries.
The salaries.
Oh, you're talking about the pool for per-call money or just the two people that are on the salary?
No, 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 the per-call money. I'm sorry. Yes, actual. Yeah, well, in the, in the uh, ledger we had the other night, it was officers and volunteers. It was uh, sixty thou, six zero zero one zero.
They don't see that.
That's what we budgeted.
But you sure, budgeted, yeah.
And I'm sure only spent a hundred and seventy-three thousand last year, correct?
That was actual.
That was actual. Yeah. And maybe this is a discussion for later on, but the, these zeros that you're talking about, these people that showed up, what, what are these? Are these medical calls, lift? Yeah, so ma, maybe we start looking at how do we incentivize our firemen to show up at the most necessary things and really incentive, so we ensure that people are showing up to structured fires, they're showing up to wildland fires on the edge. Right. But you get paid thirty dollars an hour, right? So it takes you one hour, you, you get one hour?
Yeah.
Worth of, to get out and put your turnouts on and get in your vehicle and drive. But what I'm saying is you're going through all that trouble for one hour for thirty dollars. Maybe we start looking incentivizing different calls in different ways. We only spent a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars out of a three hundred thousand dollar budget. Maybe, maybe you pay less for, in, because training is required, yes? So we pay less for training because you have to be there in order to participate, to be a fireman. But you, what I'm saying is you, you pay more for what you want people to show up.
You probably wouldn't for five dollars.
Right. Chief, what's the expected, what are you, what are you looking for? How many do you want to show up at that? No, I. So do they have, does everybody that shows up for those have to be E M Ts? I mean. So to avoid everybody showing up for fifty dollars, can you not, can you not put five people on call a month? And say, these are the only five that are eligible to show up this month. And if you show up, it's fifty dollars.
That's the trick.
But I mean, Ralph's got a point there. It might incent, even if you say you, you have five for that month, you know, and one out of five shows up, you know, well, he's more maybe incentivized to show up instead of just roll over, you know, uh, for fifty dollars as opposed to say, eh, this is a, you know, we should get thirty. I mean, it's a possibility.
Especially when it's the same address calling every night, chief, both your chiefs know.
Twelve hundred West Center.
But if you, I like your idea, Ralph. But if you, I like your idea, Ralph.
I mean, look into it, chief.
So even if you double, so if you, if you double it, you're, you're upping it thirty, thirty dollars. You had, yeah, so you had three hundred and twenty-eight no-shows. I mean, that's, that's.
I'm sixty, that's still just, just fifteen thousand.
So you're, you're still incentivizing people to show up. Now, you don't want all twenty-four people to show up. That's what I'm saying. If you're not on call, you just sign up for a.
That's right.
Get in there, chief.
Depends on who it is.
It's ten degrees outside and, and you're there sleeping at three o'clock in the morning.
Well, I think this is something that we continue to discussion as we talk about. I mean, I think, I think are things that we can, I think are things that we can improve on until we can figure out the full-time fire.
And that may be in part of that planning conversation.
Yes.
We ain't never figuring out the full-time fire.
Yeah, we will. We can sell beer, we'll make it.
Bottom line is, we know a hundred and seventy-four thousand's an excellent deal. I mean, we, we're getting a great deal. And the alternative to that great deal is horrible.
But we're budgeting three hundred thousand, so we have some wiggle room there.
Absolutely.
For incentive, incentives.
Yeah.
It'd be about two-point-three million if you go full-time.
Yeah. That's what those safer grants are for. About two-point-three, two.
Yeah.
That might be why the change in that safer grant went to eleven versus ten. It may have been that.
Three shifts. At midnight?
We need to increase our numbers, our available.
We can do this on the study session.
From twenty-four to, back up to thirty-three, available staff.
Because they all work three shifts, one day off, three days, two days off. So like, they're all maybe working, maybe they're working on the same day. And then one of the guys, even if it's working, they're always gone on the same day. And sometimes when other guys are gone on vacation, that's really, that's really rough. Saturday morning, they answer, I, I was done, so they call, because we were a little too happy. I thought, I don't like it, it's Sunday, but I thought if they thought it was Friday, it'd be all around the same time. But I might have to do that. And the only way I can say you're required to be here at this amount of time is personally. Otherwise, I can't require you to do that, because that was fit. I would agree with you all for that matter.
So why, so why don't we do this, uh, if the council, I don't know that anybody's wanting to commit anything tonight to put in the budget tonight? But I'd say next month, and I don't think there should be any delay. I mean, heaven forbid we're, we're chit-chatting about this and you have a call and you don't have enough. So I think the sooner the better. Uh, and I, and I love the nighttime or, or two-hour minimum, whatever it is, to, for that to be an incentive. So let's, let's have that on next month's agenda for sure. If that's okay with council, and, and get that settled.
Going on the February agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Sound good.
Sounds good.
Fire incentives discussion?
Yep. And did, we get, get the agreement on the hundred dollars for us, or?
I, I'm good with that, if you guys wanna, you all wanna do the hundred-dollar incentive tonight? Is that what we're calling?
I do.
I do.
Add it tonight?
All current.
Can you stick that in there?
So, question though, do they have to be still with us in December, or any time of the year, or what? To qualify?
Just to blow a little, because we were one million and two thousand.
Did it really?
Okay.
Was that serious?
Now, the word, if they have to leave the department in July? And, and they try to say on their final check, well, where's my hundred, I mean, okay. Because believe me, every scenario, you don't think it right now will happen.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, we're just giving it Christmas, like everybody else.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a hundred dollars.
Not a Christmas bonus.
We don't call it Christmas bonuses. Year-end incentive.
Year-end incentive.
Fireman.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-four.
We have twenty-two.
No, what do you have now?
No, two of those, two of those are already getting a two-fifty, so we have twenty-two.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two hundred dollars. He doesn't. Okay. All right.
So there's thirty-five if he has a full staff.
That would be a, that's it, and it's in it.
Get off your elbows.
Make people push to get extra.
Yes.
Those are ideas that need to happen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
I agree to that.
Yes, that needs to happen.
And we can do that and talk about it.
Remember to bring that up.
And I do know that that is, if I'm correct, me real quick, that's in your regular check, that's not a separate. So the mayor may not even notice it, so chief, you have to tell him.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Because even the two-fifty, you kind of. Yeah.
On the February meeting, is that one? Bring that up, please.
Are we done talking about numbers in the budget and all that?
I make a resolution, we adopt the twenty-two-five budget?
Hold on, I have, sorry. There's a tiny little deal at Snafu that I found today when I was preparing this budget adoption pay, uh, resolution. No, pardon? Oh, well, normally it's, it normally says five thousand dollars. And I recognized from last year's that it's a different ordinance number because we have a new competitive bidding ordinance. And that's what I've attached to your number-one packet sheet. So inadvertently, when we revised this last time and adopted it, that five thousand dollars was where you see ordinance number twenty-four dash oh nine? And I highlighted that thirty-five thousand, it used to say five thousand there. That's why I'm giving you on the second part, the old ordinance that was repealed. I don't know how it got that way, I don't know. Sorry, I don't know how.
So what is this supposed to be?
It's supposed to be five thousand.
Okay.
And, and it says thirty-five thousand now.
And I have not utilized that, because I didn't.
No, and, and it's a mistake. So what I did, I was on section two.
There's a two thirty-five thousands.
Yeah, it's supposed to say five thousand at each of those spots, like twenty-four dash oh nine.
Well, it's, yeah, okay. That number got thrown around during the discussion on this ordinance.
Okay, so also, I think Rod is interested in changing some of the language in the ordinance anyway. So how about this? I have changed section two in our budget adoption resolution to reflect that the limit for the mayor is set by ordinance establishing bidding and purchasing procedures. Because I don't know the number of that ordinance when we change it. So it applies, and we don't have to come back and change this budget adoption resolution. And I'll put on the February agenda the change to twenty-four dash oh nine, make it be correct. Still at five thousand, I guess y'all like that number. And then also Rod, not, Rod has talked to me and, about his changes, and I'll ha, include that with that ordinance revision as well. Is that okay with everybody? Sorry about that, weird, but, well, things happen. We juggle a lot of or, uh, documents around here. Talk with that.
I'm good with it.
Okay. AC, what was your motion?
I make a resolution that we adopt the twenty-twenty-five budget, uh, and for other purposes, or whatever, by telling, uh, implementing Ralph's, uh, motion to have a ninety-day moratorium added on that for capital expenditures.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thanks, Tom, for your, your presentation. And thanks, everybody, we had a good conversation about many different things. So I'm looking forward to next month meeting and talking about the incentives for these firemen as much as I can, anything. Thank you, everybody.
I make a motion we adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Very much.
Motion.
Sign it. Charlotte, what all do I need to complete on this? Some of these things I had a question about.
Very good ideas that Ralph, I appreciate that.
It's a lot easier than it is. So you do name and address, of course. And anything you don't, that doesn't apply to you, you put it while under. That's your income, so anything you have, you can income.
I never have really thought about it either, but it does make sense.
Less than twelve thousand five hundred that you get income from, or your wife. You check this thing.
No Michelob? Oh, man, Michelob Ultra, come on.